All right, good evening. It's six o'clock on April first, one twenty-fourth. This is the time and place for the Tioga City Commission Public Hearing Regarding Annexation, or Proposed Annexation of the Hess Corporations. Just a couple of slight little rules for this meeting. If you guys want to talk, please come up to the podium. Identify yourself, tell us your name so we know who you are. And and then we'll be ending by six forty-five. Because we have another commission meeting right after this. But if we need to go a little bit longer, we'll see what happens, but I don't think we're gonna have a whole bunch of yelling and screaming in the in the auditorium tonight, so. All right. Liz, can you hear?
I can, yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, so we do have a couple of letters here. And I see the Hess Corporation is present tonight. So we do have a letter of protest here from prowling by the attorney of Minot, namely that they represent the opposition. Probably what's out here, okay. All right, and then we have another letter from Montreal Williams, elected electorate. And they said that they'll just continue providing services to all right, I'll open the floor. Whoever would like to talk. I'll be taking notes.
Good evening, I'm begging for the opportunity to to visit with you today. My name is Brent Lohness, I'm the general manager for Hess here in North Dakota. L O H N E S. And so on March twenty-second, we we did respond to the letter, the annexation letter that the city sent to Hess. Essentially, say in our protest annexation, I just hear it now, to say our position hasn't changed. We still want to protest the annexation.
All right, thank you.
We're the chairman of the Township. And I was here a couple of weeks ago stating some dislike for this, this thing. The city town has been annexing property within the township for the last ten or twelve years. To the west, the loadout facility, and into the east, the office, the Hess office, and lunchroom, and whatnot, and it didn't really hurt township too bad on a fiscal level. But the town gas plant is seventy-five percent of the funding to Tioga Township. And Tioga Township has a whole bunch of miles to maintain, the most miles we need township in the state. And we, today, we levy three mils, three, three, three point fifteen mils. And if town township was to lose the town gas plant as a a living facility, we would have to go to fifteen and a third mils just to possibly stay level with our funding and our cushions and and stuff like that. So that would mean that a one hundred thousand dollar property, being the fact that Tioga Township loses the town gas plant as a funding facility, we would have to, a one hundred thousand dollar property would have to raise fifty dollars a year on the township portion of property tax. Per land, that's fifty dollars for one hundred thousand dollar property value. Which is a two hundred and six percent increase. We've got a few, a few of our concerned folks here in the township. We're all very concerned about it. Being that with the school up there, our property taxes, because the people went up a whole bunch with that twenty-four and a half million dollar bond levy up there that they just rolled. So the the property taxes in Tioga and Tioga Township, especially everybody going out the roof. That's about what I have.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
At the last commission meeting when you came up, you had provided a a value that the Hess Corporation gave to the township revenue. I don't recall what that was. What was that again? Do you recall?
Twenty-four point one million.
A year?
That is a total valuation according to Williams County. Valuation
No, I'm talking about the tax, the tax revenue that you guys are
It's about eighty-three thousand dollars a year.
Eighty-three thousand.
Oh, and then, the one thing that's right now, this also takes into consideration the rural fire district. They get funding today, I have the check, I haven't dispersed yet, a check of thirty thousand dollars rural fire district payment from Tioga Township. And it's been from thirty thousand dollars to forty-eight thousand dollars per year. And a leeway in there that the county, I don't know how they get, you know, it could be so varied, but that thirty thousand dollars that rural fire district will get today will go to five hundred if Tioga Township loses our gas plant as a living facility. So there is that also.
Would you pay them that thirty thousand dollars? Is that for their services, or what was that?
Yes, oh, yes.
I'm just trying.
That is, that's mandated by the county that the township pays back to the rural fire protection.
It's a mill. Yeah, everything else, I think that answered my questions.
Cool, thank you.
Just so you know, sure, since you have the agenda, I'll just let you know what you missed so far. So this is the open public hearing for the proposed annexation corporation at this point. The floor is currently open. If you decide that you would like to speak, please come up to the podium, state your name, and your opposition, or or whatever you would like to talk about regarding this.
Well, my name is Todd Beasley, I live in the Tioga Township, and I'm against the annexation.
Todd, can you spell your last name, please, sir?
Beasley, B E A S L E Y. I'm also on the Tioga Township Commission, or Board, so I don't know what's been said before, I'm sorry. But my, my reason I'm against it is first, stop, we're gonna raise taxes once it's, once it's if it does go through. Number two is are you gonna lower back the towns, the cities' taxes for the people for the money that you're gonna get? You know, because if you're gonna, you think you're gonna get a whole bunch of money, then is that gonna be a benefit to people in the town, or? No, I don't understand the whole idea of why, you know, all of a sudden, well, I shouldn't say all of a sudden. It's been going on for many years, and I understand it's dollar signs, and everybody wants to get money from the gas plant. But, yeah, the reality is, you're not gonna get that much money, because at some point, they're gonna come back and say, hey, if you want us to stay here and and keep employing people, you know, this tax breaks, now you're, you're already gonna start losing money right off the bat. Plus, it's gonna be sold to Chevron, and that's, they're gonna come in and say the same thing, so in order to keep it going and and everything else, you're gonna have to make concessions. And at the stand right now, it costs us a lot of money, and we can keep the tax low for the farmers, to keep everybody in business, you know, some of them are large farmers, but some aren't. And myself, I do farm, and I don't make a lot of money for what I sell, so I'm very small, and I don't think it's a good idea. I just don't think, I think it's it's more detrimental. You've already started taking the farm away from this community. The first thing you can take in the farm festival, you know, we have, we have a farm festival, but it's not really that, where it's a a harvest festival, it's not the farm festival, we don't have a lot of four H in the world, we don't have other showings of that nature. And the, the land that was given to the city was from farmers, the building was built by farmer funds, and just you're taking more you're taking more and more away from what, what's gonna be here long after the oil stops. So and with the government saying more and more all the time that they wanna get rid of natural gas and oil and everything else, I don't know if you've even looked at how many refineries have been lost since twenty twenty-one. And there, and instead of upgrading because of the threat of oil going away, all the subsidies and everything else going away for oil and gas, that gas plant might be a hulking mess of sitting out there, and they could abandon it, walk away from it, and say how, and since it's in your town, you don't have to take care of it. So I, I know that there's other programs that are like, like Superfund and stuff, that that might go under Superfund Act, and still, it's gonna be something that Tioga, it's gonna have to do with with raising the taxes.
Right, no, and and I understand where you are, so I, I just have a as a board member for the Tioga Township, isn't that a concern of yours, then, if, if the business goes out, that you guys would say the thing, thing that you were proposing to us, which, yes, is a very valid response if it does happen, but as a township board member, wouldn't you be concerned?
Well, absolutely, we're, we're all concerned about that.
Because if that, if that occurs, then you're going to, as a township, be responsible for the same thing you're telling me, right?
Absolutely.
And, and then at that point, what would you guys do for your taxes, because I understand, Mr. Stewart, or the peer talking just a moment ago, regarding what the, what the mill levy would look like if the annexation wanted to take place. So I, I just, I, I see where you're at, and I'm just, got the same concern for you guys.
And and it's a viable point, but the but not raising the taxes to them makes it more affordable and makes it more desirable on their side to to stay where they are and to keep, do, do as business as is full. But if you raise taxes on them, which, which is gonna happen, that you're gonna raise, the city taxes more than the township does. And so you're gonna raise taxes on them no matter what, and that, that is gonna be less attractive to stay. I mean, it's just gonna be the first day in, in, in a, in a series of cascading things.
And because I don't know, how many refineries have closed on point one, because I don't know.
Well, according to a study that was done in January this year, the US has lost the refining capacity to upload one point two billion barrels of, of gasoline and diesel manufacturing a day. So that's quite a lot. They're, they're losing all of refineries on the east coast, and and also on, on, because most of the oil here goes south to refineries on the old coast. So they're losing refinery capacity constantly, and then you hear, you hear them news all the time about refinery capacity lost, so.
Okay, and saying for not to, right?
Yes. There's not many of these gas points are weak. And especially in this area.
I don't have
Once our speakers are done, President Lynton, let me know, I, I don't wanna co-op the floor to give some background and some information until everyone in the audience has had an opportunity to speak, but I'll just wait for a sign that indicates that may have happened when you're ready.
Hello, my name is Dale Weflen. I live in Tioga Township for almost seventy years.
Can you spell your last name, sure.
W E F L E N. I'm very much opposed of this annexation. It will cause hardship to the township, call it debt. I'm very bothered to help keep the roads, are you guys willing to come out and take care of, of keep the roads in Tioga Township, there's a bunch of as I speak, there's two well pads east of me, I live on Seventieth, Seventieth Street. They're drilling five or six wells on each one for now, and it could be more. Two weeks ago, they started drilling, I had a lot of trucks go by over the weekend. I mean, I bet there was, in two days, there was sixty or more trips of trucks. Tonight, as I come in, there was three trucks, two with casing, another one slowly going that way, they're tearing the heck out of the roads. Who's gonna, we're, we're gonna run out of money to keep up with that. That's kind of what I'm thinking. And I guess the purpose of you're one addict, what do you need to my report? To get more money from the gas plant? It's a general fund that's going to, if there are purposes for it, that I haven't heard, you understand.
So I know that we provide all of the services to, to them, if that makes sense, the water comes through us. But and so and, and as it's been alluded to earlier, this has been a long time process. Long before I even got onto the commission. So we're just, after the after the last, what was the terminology that we used? But there was the last annexation that was gonna propose. And then there was, they asked them to hold it due to whatever, whatever reasons they saw fit. That has lapsed. So now, we're just continuing on as a commission to do what prior commissions have tried to do. It, it, it's not because we're like, we want money, it's not what this is all about, it's something that the city of Tioga has been trying to do for a very long time. And so just trying to move forward with what our previous commissions had tried to do, that's all.
Well, I would say it's time to get it up, because there's more tax money. I don't know the figures, I've seen them before, but that the city collects for the sales in the city in Tioga than any other town in the region. It's way more than Ray Crosby, all these other companies, because they're getting plenty of tax money to spend the five weed, I guess, but, yeah, I don't see why, and these wells are, are east of me, they're, they're being drilled by haves. You know, so, and so who's gonna take care of the infrastructure? That's about what I got to say.
Appreciate it. Thank you. So is there any hearing silence? Does anybody else have any protest or, or that they would like to speak?
I have a question, President Lynton, you just mentioned the water infrastructure. Water infrastructure comes from Ray Tioga Corporation. And the Hess plant pays for every gallon of water a day? And so, um, can you enlighten us on, on what you're referring to?
So it comes through our infrastructure, is it?
Yes, yes. What infrastructure? Already been in, it's been in for twenty, fifteen, twenty years, and then they've been paying for every gallon historically, what infrastructure are you talking about, sir? Today, so what's, what's the increase of maintenance fee that, that the city is gonna need?
If a high rate, don't we have to assess somebody to fix it, who is being paid for? Accountant, the township, or the team?
Who, the RT Corporation?
No.
I need to demonstrate. I'm opposed to the annexation. I guess a couple of questions is, will, right now, as it stands, do you guys provide sewer to the gas plant? You know, sewer line that go over there, all the way to the gas plant, or just to the Hess office? I maybe misunderstood, but I only heard that it was just to the Hess office, it hasn't been put all the way to the gas plant.
And we are talking about our water, we use that for the plant.
I'm talking about sewage. For the gas plant? Okay, okay. So are you guys gonna main, main, right now, the company maintains the road going to the gas plant, am I correct?
Yes.
Signal Road, or Sixty-Fifth?
So will they still, the company still maintain that, or if this, if this gets annexed, will the city?
The city will be responsible for it.
Okay. So my question is, you got a lot of roads in the city of Tioga that are an absolute mess. South Main, when that got redone, it's nothing but bumps and bumps, and I mean, it's absolutely horrible.
And I'm not gonna disagree with you on that one, and I can't speak of it, but there's, there's things that are being dealt with with the company that, that did that.
How long does it take?
That's a great question, litigation does take a very long time.
You know, I mean, man alive, that, that's the worst job I've ever seen, of somebody doing that job, or?
Dude, I can come over there, sorry, I shouldn't have said to you, that is very appropriate. I'll come over there and give you a high five, because I agree, that, that.
Well, you know what I mean, you know, you guys are talking about getting all this stuff, well, if you didn't have to do stuff to maintain that, you can't maintain what you have already.
We can maintain it, the job that was done was not approved.
Well, I mean, you know, it should be
I see what you're saying, I get where
It shouldn't be drug on forever and ever and ever, you know?
Okay, where legal system?
Push comes to shove, I mean, you know, let's grab the bull at the horns, and let's take care of some of this stuff and get it done.
Maybe you and I can meet on Saturday, and we'll go take care of that.
Well, it's just frustrating when you, you know, you see the city wants to do something to take away from the township.
Right.
And if you take that away from the township, then, okay, eventually, if the township doesn't have the money to take care of the roads, which there's forty-four miles of the road, if they don't have the funds to do that, then they'll be like some of these other little townships, that they turn it over to Williams County. And they have to take care of it. While Williams County can't take care of the roads that they have and do a decent job. So you add forty-four more miles, how's that gonna work? You know, I mean, I, I honestly, I think the city needs to focus on the city, and just leave the gas plant alone, let the township do what they need to do, and just give it that back.
Appreciate it, yeah, thank you. You were hitting a lot of hot buttons there, and I can't, I have to hold my tongue. Anybody else have anything that they would like to say? I feel like we're sitting in detention for a little bit. So
We're just here to feel
So for procedural reasons, I'll ask if anybody else would like to come to the mic to have a conversation regarding this proposed annexation.
Yes, one more thing, would the city get the same amount of funds that the township is getting, or would they put another tax on like what the, the gas and whatnot from the gas plant?
That's a great question.
The city would be probably taxed from the gas plant, we wouldn't add any of these, but it will be the city's.
Is there any, is there any sales tax on the gas, using the gas plant, things like that?
Yes, that's what they would just be.
Oh, so, so they will get all of that. Okay. So is that what Tioga Township is?
I don't believe Tioga Township has sales tax.
No? Just for you know that.
I don't believe the title of the township has sales tax.
They just get mils?
You just get, yeah, the property.
Okay, okay.
Isn't the, the scheme that the city charges every retail product that leaves the gas plant, so one and a half percent city bill tax on all the products that get sold? Isn't that the main?
It's not a scheme, but that is appropriate, that will charge sales tax.
Okay, so it isn't the taxable valuation of eighty-three thousand dollars for the town township, but it's also the one and a half percent that the city would get off in every retail product that leaves the town gas plant, right? So it's way more than the taxable valuation.
Correct.
So Todd, you begin, so last year, for the Tioga Township, it requested from the city of Tioga that we pave sixty-seventh street, wasn't it? The sixty-seventh that we're supposed to pay?
Uh, uh, it was a product on cost share.
Yeah, cost shares. So if you take away the gas plant, there's no cost share there.
So is that the, it's the sixty-seventh street that we wrote the the grant for, and that we provided the information to the board? And we don't know what happened with that?
Yes, we thank, happy very much, that was very helpful, but we were denied. We were just, we got notification in January that we were denied that, correct?
Did they say why?
They don't do that. It's not going to DOT, yeah, they said they don't, they don't pay.
So, that's, okay. So I just wanted to I appreciate it, thank you. All right, so I'll ask two more times. Is there anybody that would like to come to the podium to protest or speak regarding the proposed annexation of Hess? Not every, you're, there's just only a couple of opportunities I have.
Very roundly, and
Very, can you spell your last name, I'm sorry?
R A M B E R G. And just to I don't live in the township, and I'm just across the line from it, but it is the Tioga Township has, like I said, one smile, and then the township turns it into twenty-four mile road. With, and and it's just kind of how things work, but it seems kind of first, the rail facility gets annexed. First, the rail facility gets annexed, and then somehow or another, we managed to leapfrog over Terry Longy and the annex KSI yard. All, all of this takes away from the township. And they're... And I know they're, they're not in the city, but they are... Well, there's all, they spend their money, principal. I mean, they, they just kind of take that absolutely into consideration. And I would be kind of curious as to... And I know you'd mentioned that it's not, this is just an ongoing process, and it's not, you know, you're not trying to just get everything you can. But I, I was kind of curious as to, like, just how much the city would gain on the sales tax portion of it? Because, I mean, but if there would be, if, if this were to happen, if there would be some sort of agreement or some sort of a way to work in where the city, because obviously, the eighty thousand dollars, that's a sizable amount of money, but it ain't really something that the city's really gonna get too percolating. It's very, it's life or death for them. The big bones for the city will be the one and a half percent sales tax. If, if there would be some way to get into, if this were to pass, that the township could still maintain the property tax portion of the... What you call it.
I don't, I don't know. They're, they're...
Just, just curious. I mean, I understand what she's saying, I think, but is there no way of aiding the Tioga Township at all? Does it go through?
Well, I'm not sure if the city could, you know...
But that's what I'm asking.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm sure Liz would have an answer, but I'm, I'm just willing to bet that the city couldn't gift the township, you know, whatever amount of money. I, I, I would bet you that probably not. And, and you have, you must have some sort of projections on what you're thinking on, though.
I do, and I don't know that Abby does.
I don't know. I, I was, uh...
Yeah, we don't discuss things like that, but those are confidential things. If I went to the state tax commission to get those numbers, they wouldn't make me sign a, 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 so, a confidentiality. So, it's not something that I'd...
Oh, that, that was just, was it?
Right.
Curiosity.
Yeah.
And then, and then really quick, Barry, on the, on the comment regarding the KSI annexation, that was, that was at their request.
Oh, I get that.
We, we didn't, we didn't walk in there and be like...
Oh, no, I mean, I, I understand it. When I was on the city finding its own, and one of the very first things you're not supposed to do is fly a hole or leapfrog. That's a leapfrog. There is no connection between the apartments out there and KSI. There may be in the future, but the annexation came before the connection, so that's another leapfrog.
Okay. Appreciate it, Barry.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, as for, hi, Emily, I'm Dunn. I am the tax assessor for this area. I just wanted to make a quick note, and if you have more questions, I'll direct you to ask Christie, because she is actually the city of Williston's commercial assessor, and she would know more about this. But the city of Williston had actually set this up when they annexed the airport from Mont Township. They actually made a payment to Mont Township for that difference in taxing information. So, that's maybe something you guys could get with the city of Williston, to touch base with them a little.
It's possible.
It is a possibility. If you have more questions, they would definitely direct you to ask Christie. She would know more about that.
Don't think we have any, well, I don't have any questions regarding that right now, because I don't want to put the...
Sorry, before the horse.
All right, I've already asked twice. Is there anybody else who'd like to come up to the podium and discuss this?
Hello, when you, you know, again? So, if he did annex a gas plant, should stop there and keep doing whole township? His, his, I only look at Bonson Willis, and in the years to come, with its industry and housing, all the way to the Thirteenth Mile Corner?
I don't want to go to the Thirteenth Mile Corner with our community.
Or we then, or... Top our farm up and move instead of wanting more ground, more island?
I...
More people all the time?
I can't speak for anybody else on this commission, but I can't speak for myself, okay?
All right.
My thought process is, I like small rural communities. That's why I moved to Tioga.
That's exactly what I hear.
That's why, that's why I'm doing what I do and why I ran for this position. Because my goal is to keep Tioga a good community. And we can grow a tiny bit, but we will never, and under any of my say, be as big as Williston.
No, I'm sure not.
And we will never get to Thirteenth Mile Corner unless Barry allows us to do some leapfrogging.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, thank you. Come on up.
So, I live in town. My farm is a mile north on Sixty-Ninth. So, would the city ever think about annexing my farm into the city?
Do you, would you like us to annex your farm?
No.
Okay.
Stay where you're at. Leave us alone. No.
Perfect. Sixty-nine, okay, perfect. All right. Any other comments, statements? Everybody feel that they've been heard? All right, okay. Then Liz, I'll close this one. You can have it.
Sure. Um, I just wanted to note a couple of things for the public's interest, and I want to thank the members of the Tioga Township Board for appearing this evening. We sure do appreciate your comments, and I know that you appeared at the prior commission meeting where this matter was first raised, the resolution in any event. I also want to thank Mr. Lannis from Hess, and we'll tell you, we genuinely look forward to working with both township members and Hess as we proceed. It's important to note for the procedural record here that this annexation is taken pursuant to forty-five-one point two dash zero seven. Just for the public's information, there are a couple of different ways that annexes can occur. You folks have rightly pointed out annex request, for example, in the KSI where a property owner approaches the city and requests it. There are ways in which various property owners can petition for that to happen, and then in this case, there's a process, and that's the statute I've just cited, for annexation by resolution of the city. As Hess has the right to do, and as they've exercised, being that they're more than one quarter of the total interest in the property as ownership, I mean, under ordinance or statute, rather, they are permitted to make protest. They timely did that, and we will include Hess's letter for our record proceedings. I believe that was dated March twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-four. So, we do appreciate that that was promptly supplied, and we also appreciate Montreal Williams Electric providing their information and intent to continue with services, no matter how this plays out. There are a lot of moving parts here, I think, as everyone agrees. There are a lot of competing interests. And the good news about that is that it seems like there's a very healthy dialogue going on right now. And the better news about that is that the law sort of anticipates that there may be protests, and there is likely to be need for further discussions. And so, based on what has happened this evening, and Hess's protest letter properly given, timely given, the next step in this process will be mediation. There's a mediation that occurs in contested annexation proceedings, and that's what we anticipate here. So, the relevant parties, and that would include the township, that would certainly include Hess, will be invited and kept apprised of that mediation process as we proceed. I did just want to give a little bit of background. For the city, I know it's a little bit, you know, things are controversial. Like I said, there are competing interests, and I don't mean controversial in a bad way. I just mean that there are competing interests, and there's a need for further discussion. There were some questions about the prior arrangement with the city, to the degree that those have been answered. I appreciate the commission and Abby weighing in on that. It's worth noting, if anyone's interested and they want to do the, the research on this topic, that there's a prior ordinance number twenty-seventeen zero seven. And that is an ordinance under which the city and Hess and other interested parties entered into what is called an annexation agreement years ago. That was before my time with the, the commission. That was back in two thousand and fifteen, actually. The city commenced its original process for annexation of the property now at issue. It, Hess protested at that time. The parties followed through with mediation, and ultimately, there was an annexation agreement reached. Just to be clear, and, and I think that sheds some light, under the agreement, generally speaking, and I'm, I'm simplifying here because the agreement is somewhat lengthy, but the terms of the agreement were that the city, Hess would withdraw its protest, and the city would withdraw its annexation attempts at that time, provided, a couple of things. Number one, that there would be no further attempts until July of two thousand and twenty, okay? That's the sunset clause. We're way past that. It's now two thousand and twenty-four, and so, the sunset provision has come and gone, and we've been operating in accordance with the terms of the annex. The other couple of points that happened to make that situation helpful to everyone involved, or as helpful as could be made at the time, were that the city would continue to provide service, as was indicated to Hess, both in the way of water and sewer. So, that is something that Hess enjoys as a result of city infrastructure, partial city infrastructure. We all know a lot of things have, have changed very much financially since two thousand and fifteen. Certainly, things have changed substantially since two thousand and twenty, so even on the basis of an evolving, well, an evolving dollar, for one, and different political features and different economic features, it's, it's appropriate, in the estimation of the city, to, to be re-inquiring of this, and we've honored our side with regard to the sunset provisions. I will also note that, you know, under that agreement, Hess agreed to make payment in lieu of property taxes pursuant to certain provisions of, of the century code. So, that was a very, I think, appropriate agreement. I didn't participate in its making, but it took account of all the interests of all the parties involved. I think it's worth saying, and I don't, I, I'm not, again, trying to put the cart before the horse, but I do appreciate the township coming. And I think the assessor from Williams County there made a helpful point. I don't want to commit to whether that is a specific availability in this instance, but what I will say is that mediation involving the right parties can often lead to some very good and creative and, and fair results. So, I think it's fair for the township members that are concerned, that you understand that I, I know, I, I'm aware that the city would be very interested in ways to make this outcome good for everyone involved. I guess that's all I can say at this point, because we, you know, we can't judge the particulars until we have the conversations, but I think that's certainly the city's intention. We don't wish our neighbors to suffer any detriment as a result of this process at all, including the township. So, that's kind of the background there. It has been sort of a long-running discussion, so to speak, that ended in the, in an agreement, and that agreement sunsetted back in two thousand and twenty. And so, I, you know, temporally speaking, from a time, time standpoint, I think it's fair that this is being revisited. It's also worth noting that under Part Two of that agreement that I referenced, for the city water and sewer services, the city was specifically obligated to continue to supply those uses to, to Hess Corporation. And they were also given a ten percent Hess, I mean, discount for that use under the agreement. So, those are all features, again, that, that are going to be considered in the course of this process. I think with that background in, in hand and understanding the process to some degree moving forward, that's really all I had to share. I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that that agreement was in place, that the sunset occurred, and that we appreciate everyone participating in this process and promptly, you know, giving their positions in writing and verbally in today's meeting. Certainly, I'm available to the, the city, and will be with the city as we work through this process. And I'll look forward to working with council for Hess and any township members that are participating. So, I think that's all I have for this evening, and I, I appreciate everyone's efforts and thoughtful commentary.
All right, thank you. All right, so the floor is closed, and everybody's had an opportunity to speak. If there's nothing further regarding this, the motion to adjourn this hearing? I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right, with the motion and a second to adjourn the public hearing. No questions, comments, concerns from the board? Would you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, all right. Meeting adjourned at six forty-five. Thank you.